Thank you very much. So our plenary speaker today, I'm going to abbreviate his very long and amazing bio so we can hear from him. Reverend Starsky Wilson from St. Louis is a pastor philanthropist and activist. He is currently president and CEO of the Deaconess Foundation and pastor of St. John's Church in St. Louis. And if you don't know Deaconess, it's an incredible faith-based grant-making organization that is focused on child well-being as a civic priority for the St. Louis region. And it's a great example of collective impact that aligns policy advocacy, organization, and community engagement with its grant-making. I can't tell you, it's amazing just sitting and talking to Reverend Wilson, just the ideas and reflections upon the role of museums and libraries. And I think his experience when he was appointed in 2014 to co-chair the Ferguson Commission in response to the tragedy of Michael Brown's death, really, I think his reflections upon that, in addition to his work at the Deaconess Foundation, will set us off on our journey today and tomorrow. So I really thank you so much for making time to be here, and we look forward to your comments. Thank you.
It is indeed a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much, Kit, and to the team at the Institute for Museum and Library Services for the occasion to be with each of you this morning. It is appropriate for me always, and of course, thanks to the partners at William Penn Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund as well, for support of this convening. It is always appropriate for me to do level-setting with folks, to let people know my defaults. I am a preacher. I am a black preacher. In case you didn't notice, I am a black preacher from the South who happens to be serving at a foundation and spent some time leading commission. Those things being said in public space, I have to let you know, because I also serve a very diverse church at St. John's Church in St. Louis, and that church has folks from all different cultural backgrounds there in the inner city in St. Louis. And so I am reminded at times that I have to give certain people permission to do things, and so I'm going to do this. So those in our church who grew up in black church traditions, they grew up talking back to the preacher. What I found out in service at this church and the previous church I served, which was also racially diverse, is that my European brothers and sisters find it rude to speak when other people are speaking. And so I actually have to give them permission. So if there are things that seem to connect with you, you disagree with, if you disagree, hold that to yourself. But if there are things that resonate with you, I invite you to speak back to me. It might actually help me keep my time, just for the record. The other thing I should give context on is there's a set of images that'll be rolling on the screen that is behind you. I find it inappropriate with spoken word to invite people into the experiences of people in very difficult and even tragic circumstances. And so I've come to try to share with folks, to get them closer to the experiences that we have had in the St. Louis metropolitan community since the August 9, 2014 death of Michael Brown and the following community uprising with different sets of images. I invite you, they will rotate on a loop, so I'm not clicking through, they will rotate on that loop to invite you to engage in the experience, and some of these things I will connect with throughout the time of the presentation. And if it is the case that you just get tired of looking at me, there are better things, perhaps more engaging things to look at there. I'd like to begin with a reflection and a quote from my grandfather. My grandfather, R.L. Turner, is, the late R.L. Turner, was a cook in the Army. And he's one of those folks, everyone needs these folks, Kit. When you can't remember who said something, you need somebody to attribute it to? And so there are three or four voices I have like this. This is one of the things that I know my grandfather actually said. One of the things he always told me, he said things like, "Every man needs a truck, because if you got a truck, you'll never be out of work." He also said things, this common wisdom, like, "There are two things they ain't making no more of: time and land. You're not getting any more time, and there ain't gonna be any more land." This common reflection on the fact that there will be no more land produced, there will be no more space produced, calls us to be thoughtful about how we use the spaces that we have. He, of course, was always trying to remind me, he was focusing on the time part. Do what you can while you can, and make good use of your time. Be expedient in your engagement, be a good steward of that which God has given you. But this piece about land, I think, is appropriate for us in time and space today, that we're not getting any more space, and so perhaps there's something we should be doing with the space that we have to make the best and optimal use of that space. I am particularly reminded of the sense of scarcity about land that my grandfather instituted to me when I consider the modalities of public protests that we see taking center states today. I am, it is cognizant, this comes to my mind when I see and remember the images of the Occupy movement, taking up space in New York, in public parks, in spaces for the sake of recreation, community building, and reflection. I am reminded when I consider the meetings that occurred, some in the basement of my church, organized with folks in the BLM, the Black Lives Matter movement and network, the shutdown movement that began to spring up in the fall of 2014, stopping up highways across the country in concert with one another. These young people from Chattanooga to Atlanta to St. Louis, who took public space for the sake of shutting down public operations in order to get a point and a message across. Those who sat in the street at Canfield and West Florissant in St. Louis, near the place where Michael Brown's body lay, they decided, because there was no more land being produced, they would reinterpret, reuse, and stop up for the sake of repurposing the land that was used, particularly public land. There seems to be, it seems to me, a desperation about public space. I was reminded of this in August, late August of 2014, I got an email. I got an email from a staff person from one of our local museums. This email from the staff person at one of our local museums in St. Louis invited me or my colleague Mike Kenman, the leader and dean of the local cathedral, to provide space for what was called the Ferguson Freedom Ride. A group of activists led by Patrice Cullors, one of the co-founders of the Black Lives Matter movement, and Darnell Lee out of New Jersey, who is one of the leaders as well, helped to organize from coast to coast more than 450 people in two and a half weeks to descend upon the community in St. Louis and Ferguson. The problem was that with 24 hours left with all of these people who had raised funds to make it there, the public university institution that told them that they could convene there for four days, all of a sudden told them that they couldn't come when they got a better sense of what they were going to do. The museum official reached out to the church leaders because the public university decided that they would not house this particular group. And so from public space and public space to sacred space, these activists found a place to abide and to engage. There are images you will see here of Patrice and Darnell, and there are images you'll see of a sanctuary full of people with Black Power fists up, because they are in that church space, which wasn't very comfortable for many of them, just for the record. Church doesn't have the best history with some of these things about dress code and deportment and behavior and progressive and sexual orientation, all of these matters. And so it wasn't exactly the space they expected. But the public spaces turned them our direction. Papa said, I'm sorry, that's what I called my grandfather when I'm not in these more formalized settings. Papa said, "There's two things they ain't making no more of: time and land." And so when the public spaces and land turned them in a different direction, they found themselves in the church. It seems to me what we have is a problem of shrinking public space. Spaces where we might connect, spaces where we might learn from one another's person, spaces where we may grow, spaces where we may dialogue for the sake of getting to a different answer, spaces where we may be exposed one to another and come to know one another and dream together. This is part of what I experienced in this shrinking public space with the BLM movement. It is also perhaps what has led to what some would call the desperate tactics of Occupy and desperate tactics of BLM to shut down spaces and even to reclaim spaces that we thought were ours in the first place. On the anniversary of Michael Brown's death, actually the day after the anniversary, on August 10, 2015, there were people, actually in this gathering, this gathering of folks whom you see led by Bre Newson here and Rahel Tesfermeriam, wearing a T-shirt that will be in the Smithsonian Museum for African-American Culture, we found ourselves barricaded from a public space in the U.S. federal courthouse. Here Dr. Cornel West and Reverend Osajfo Seku overcome the barrier. As we overcome that barrier, we're seeking to enter into the federal courthouse to deliver a letter from a group of clergy to the U.S. attorney. But we are barricaded from this public space. And so we began to take a seat. I should also say, connecting the sacred and the public, part of what we did before we went in was we took sacred oils from various traditions and we anointed the space for the sake of reclaiming it for God's people. We are clergy, by the way. As we sought to do that, we then sought to enter the space, and without being let into the space that was paid for by tax dollars, we took a seat there in the front of the doors. And for taking such action in this previously articulated public space, we were summarily arrested, 73 of us in that morning action. Later that day, young people led a shutdown of a highway, and there were some 120-plus of them arrested. This, you may note, didn't go over well with the governor who had appointed me to the But I want to suggest, this raises a question. What might this have to do with you? What might an Occupy and shutdown protest modality that speaks to a scarcity of sacred space say about previously public spaces and the spaces that we have known to be public, like libraries and museums? I want to offer that in this sense of scarcity, museums and libraries may well be redeemed and/or redemptive public spaces for catalyzing beloved community. Yeah, I very intentionally use this term that is eschatological, that is theological, that speaks to our hopes. This term popularized by Dr. King of beloved community. Johnny Bernard Hill of Louisville Presbyterian Seminary speaks of beloved community as a multicultural, multiracial community of love and justice, peace and justice where love is the governing ethic. This is the space that many of us hope for. It is reflective, quite frankly, of the work and the aspirations of 3,000 citizens who engaged in the Ferguson Commission process, gave more than 30,000 volunteer hours to make more than 189 policy recommendations and calls to action, calls to action for various sources of public engagement and accountable bodies. What they said ultimately is that we desire racial equity in our community. We want that for ourselves, and that we decided to do this together. The question is, how might we resource that? In order to get there, I think, as I kind of walk briefly through my experiences, I want to suggest that there are a few things we need that museums and libraries may help to provide, that will help us get to this sense of beloved community even with the limited time and space that we have. If I was in church, I'd say, "Is that all right?" I'd ask, you know, "Is it okay that I share that with you?" before I went further. First, I want to suggest, part of what we need is sanctuary. Now, I'm reminded, so I serve a small church, small church pastors do everything. Matter of fact, in St. Louis language, small church pastors do everything. One of the things I found myself doing at this small church, when I was called to the church, there were about 25 people worshiping in a sanctuary that holds about 300-plus people. That didn't make for a hope-filled reality. And so every now and then, you had to do something. And one of the cheapest things you could do for the sake of helping people know that this space, this building that's almost 100 years old, that now seems almost empty, one of the earliest things that I sought to do was I painted stuff. And I, you know, I don't, you know, don't remind my wife, because I don't like painting stuff at home, but I painted stuff at the church. I painted Sunday school rooms, I painted nurseries, I painted classrooms, I painted offices. It was something I could do with the young guys of the church, just, you know, just send your grandson down here on Saturday, we gonna paint stuff, right? But one of the most significant things I painted was the doors. I painted the doors, and every outer door of the church, we painted red. For those who wonder why you see so many church doors red, there is a narrative, particularly from Western churches, and those with traditions like ours from Protestant mainland with roots in Europe, that red doors of a space, particularly of a church or sanctuary in time of war, suggested that it was safe space. If a soldier, someone who was fleeing an enemy, found their way through the doors, then that enemy who was pursuing would not go over that threshold. There were times, quite frankly, we had to remind people of this history, when, on the night of the announcement of the No True Bill in the Darren Wilson case, churches were used as sanctuary, and we had to first negotiate with police that when people are running from tear gas, if they come inside the church, you can't come in. In order to have, in order to work toward beloved community, in order to get to the kind of dialogue that we desire, our public spaces must be sanctuary. Now, I must suggest to you that this is not our default, because we really don't understand sanctuary. We believe sanctuary is neutral space when sanctuary is actually safe space, and those two things are different. What do I mean? I want to suggest that sanctuary affords me things that are counter to what I see in the world. Those who do youth development work are reminded that when you work with young people from tragic and traumatic circumstances, and poverty is trauma, violence is trauma, when they come into a space to do work with those who seek to serve and support them, that can't just be open space that anyone can say anything they need. That needs to be spaced with boundaries, that needs to be spaced with perspective, and that needs to be spaced as consistent. And I'm offering that part of what we need for the sake of fulfilling the project of beloved community through participatory democracy and dialogue and collective action in our neighborhoods, communities, and cities is actually sanctuary. We need safe space. Now, I know, you're saying, "Well, yeah, everybody's welcome, it's safe space." No, our defaults are off. The same museum space that welcomed all of our meetings of the Ferguson Commission, that welcomed mainstream institutions of St. Louis, that welcomed the governor when he wanted to announce that we were going to have a commission, we were gonna work toward our issues, that same space I happened to try to go into on a Sunday with my son, and because there was some fights that broke out at the zoo that's on a place very near where several of our museums are, the museum doors were locked. So not only could I not get in, but young people who were fleeing difficulty in another public space could not get in. And part of the understanding, part of the defense, was that the actual museum was not owned by the public, but rather owned by the society of donors and members, and such that it could keep people out. Museums, supported by taxes from our zoo-museum district, that all of those citizens, including those young people's parents, pay in order to make sure its doors stay open. This space that is open for neutral dialogue found its way to lock its doors from young people on that occasion. I, the same citizen who was welcomed in when I was invited by the governor, was locked out when my son needed to get in there, my 10-year-old son needed to get inside, like the other young people who had been pressed across the park. This was not sanctuary, even though it claimed to be neutral space. I want to argue, and I want to trouble the conversation just a little bit that you will have, about what it means to be safe sanctuary and not just neutral space. And what it means to have a full museum or library culture that understands this matter, such that it is not the default of the security guard or the staff who happens to work on the weekends to lock the doors. We see pictures here of the church as sacred space, and I even, quite frankly, recognize the challenge in that. In the context of religious pluralism, the church or the sanctuary as we have known it in the Christian tradition, the place of the pulpit or the bima in Judeo-Christian circles, is not exactly, will not serve fully the purposes that we require for this moment. A community is a way too diverse then, too many perspectives. And so my sanctuary with the cross hanging and Black Lives Matter signs isn't exactly gonna be the space that will be sanctuary for all. We need space that is sanctuary. Not only do we need sanctuary, but we also need story. One of the great challenges early on, and I, my first, the first week of the uprising, I unfortunately watched from North Carolina. The great challenge of the conversation was that it told one story, but the young people from my church were telling another. What I saw on CNN every morning was different than what I saw in the pictures that were being texted to me. Stories seek the truth. There is a challenge in capital interest, interested narrative shaping. And we saw that, we see that in all of these uprisings, because they are spoken to you through the lens of our biases. I want to suggest that your spaces are spaces where we might, in community, seek truth through story, not just seek accuracy through detail-oriented research. This is why, this sense of truth and story is why Deaconess Foundation found it critically important to invest early in August of 2014 in creating a Ferguson Youth Organizing Fund. That we knew that there were people who were telling young people stories, speaking on behalf of, seeking to support, but no one knows your story like you. And so our investment was to support more organizing, and even to invest in the commission's work, once we understood that we could influence how the commission did its work. If this would be, as Lindsey Lupo has written, about 100 years of riot commission politics in America, seeking to get the best answers off the shelf to reproduce and process people's emotions so that they felt better about the issue six weeks later, if we were just gonna have some meetings so we could say we had meetings, and we would not actually go to people where they were, reach out to people and hear their pains, if we would just make presentations of papers and never offer people the public space to tell their stories, then they would not be worth investing in. But the definition of collective action requires us to listen to and to amplify one another's stories. The libraries, the museums become space where we might do that. You see some of our meetings going through these spaces in order to hear people's stories and give them an opportunity to be heard. This is how, when we use and think about the collective impact framework, we might actually get to a common agenda. That is actually common, because it is developed in common space. We need sanctuary, we need story, but we also need sources. This is the part where the preacher says, "I'm almost done." We need sources. The commission, the Ferguson Commission's report is found at forwardthroughferguson.org. There, you get a sense of the story of people, because there are more than 70 folks who talk about how these issues impact them, and how these recommendations may impact them as well. I tell people all the time, "You can download the report into a little spiral document, but it won't have the stories." So that's just a compliment. You don't know it unless you know the stories. But the great power that we see there is also in the sources. Part of our aim was to suggest that we needed to engage racial equity. And it's one thing to have dialogue and to hear one another, but it's another thing to do that, to have sufficient support. In that document, the community says that what we desire is a future of racial equity in our region. What we lay out is a path toward racial equity, but we did so, recognizing that we did not have sufficient support and sources to inform our aspirations. Within the repositories of these libraries and museums, it seems to me there are sources to give context for our lives, our hopes, and even our tragedies. What would it mean for our collective learning to be fully engaged and to have engaged, and to be engaged by our network, our deeply rich resource in our community of our museums, of our libraries? I was reminded of this recently on a research trip to Greensboro, North Carolina. I was there on the coincidence of history. I had the occasion to be there to study the truth and reconciliation, the Greensboro Truth and Reconciliation Project. I have deep interest as life turns, right? So God gives you these kinds of tragedies, you gotta have context for them, so you begin to study, and that's what I began to do. I began to study reconciliation processes across the globe, and recognized that the only one carried out on American soil, U.S. soil, was in Greensboro. And so I went there to learn from those folks at the Greensboro Truth and Reconciliation Project. While I was there, I came to meet Claude Barnes, a high school student from Dudley High School, who was such an activist, I like people, like good troublemakers like that, I like him. He is such an activist that when he ran for student body president in his high school at Dudley High, the administrators and local leaders wouldn't put him on the ballot. He was too much of an activist. He was connected with his brother by the name of Nelson Johnson. Nelson Johnson was there at North Carolina A&amp;T, who was really a rabble-rouser. And they said, "Just because you're with him, we're not gonna put you on the ballot." But I'll tell you how the people work. He got written in and won the election, 600 to 200 votes. So there I had the opportunity to sit down with Claude, and there we were able to put in the context, I was able to deeply dig into the story of that student movement in North Carolina A&amp;T, to put in conversation with what we experienced in Ferguson, the matter of troops and state troopers being called out, shooting into North Carolina A&amp;T College, over four days of shootout on the campus, to put that in conversation with the Greensboro massacre where people had been killed by the Ku Klux Klan in a labor rally, to put that in conversation with the sit-in movement that began there on February 1st in the 1960s, there at that lunch counter in Woolworths. And that I was able to piece together from my meetings at Faith Community Church, where the beloved community center is, and my gathering at the International Civil Rights Museum there, at the, there in Greensboro downtown. But at the same time, by coincidence of history, I had the occasion to speak and to preach at the Black Lives Matter Movement National Network Convening, which was also there. It seemed to me that there was an ordering of context and source and resource for the movement today, with those young people gathered from all over, primarily North America, to learn and to convene and to grow on how they would do their work together, to articulate what would be their collective mode of operation and collective agenda in a space and place where student movements had begun and really changed the nature of the civil rights movement. But without the connection, without the space at the museum that preserved the story, without the calling to account, then they don't have sources and grounding for their work. It seemed to me, this reminded me when I went there, of seeing the shelf, on the shelf at the library in the Central West End in St. Louis, Sister Adams. I remember walking in shortly after the commission report was released, and I saw those copies of the compliments to the report on a shelf that said, "New arrivals." Treated as if it had an ISBN number, was the commission's report inviting people to read and to engage. And I thought, "This is what folks need." We have an aspiration for racial equity, but those 3,000 people who committed to this process and who informed this document are not the 2.8 million people in the region who actually need to know it. So the library became a resource and a source for people to get this information. And I began to wonder whether it could also be, then, a source for accountability. What does it mean for these institutions to be those that keep the scorecard, the data, the indicators, to regularly report to the community about what it has said it desires to do in the libraries, to research? to do in the libraries, to research, to resource and to research that, but then also in the museums, to create convening space whereby we can come back to that which we have said before? So that these things don't become simply resources on a shelf, but rather living documents that are re-presented to community in their spaces, so that we might be accountable to one another and serve as accountable partners. I think this can all happen. I believe these, the necessity of resources, that the necessity of story and the necessity of sanctuary can be made manifest, so that we might build beloved community together in our neighborhoods, in our cities, and in our nation. But that only happens, it seems to me, if these institutions choose again to belong fully to the people and to the public. There are these critical, I try not to fall into the false Western binaries, but some things just capture me. One of the critical questions of this movement with young people is, "Whose streets?" One of the rhetorical chants that goes back and back and forth, kind of like call and response in the black church, the antiphonal chorus that we see in the songs, there is a calling of one and an answer by another. Young people yell, "Whose streets?", and others call, "Our streets." Whose streets? Our streets. This is an invitation not to be neutral, but to decide that you will be with the people. This was made more resonant when people decided to come into a public space and the symphony there at Powell Symphony Hall, and to rework and to remix an old labor song, in what they called a requiem for Mike Brown. After they dropped banners over the balcony, they began to sing songs together. "Which side are you on, friends? Which side are you on? Justice for Mike Brown is justice for us all." This, this question and this call was an invitation to decide that they would be with the people. And this is the question for all of our public spaces and institutions. If we decide to be on the side of the people, to be ourselves public institutions, then we can make manifest the necessities of participatory democracy, the necessities of collective action, the necessities of collective impact, and perhaps even the hope of racial equity in our nation. But first, we must decide, "Which side are we on?" This is the question I leave with you today, with my thanks and gratitude for the opportunity to share. God bless you.
Well, thank you so much for leaving us with thoughts, challenge, and I think a platform to start our conversation.